All right, welcome everyone to the Joint Judiciary and Health and Human Services 1030 Agenda. This Monday morning at 10:30 016. So my name is Carl Rhodes and chair of the Judiciary Committee. The other members of my committee are Vice Chair Gabbert, Senator Alafonte, Senator Sanborn, and Senator Alawah. We'd like to...
Okay, so for Health and Human Services, there's myself as chair and my vice chair, Senator Aquino.
Okay. If there's a major technical difficulty and everything crashes, we'll try again tomorrow at 9:45 in this room. And a public notice will be posted on the legislative website. All audio, testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until your turn to testify. There's per the agenda notice, there's a one-minute limit per testifier. And if you have any technical glitches for those in Zoom land, we'll try to come back to you, but every once in a while, we can't. And we'll have to move on. But we do have your written testimony. So I think that's it for the preliminaries. Let's go ahead and start with the SB 1540. This expands the Criminal Justice Diversion Program and ends the allowable period of court order assistance, assisted community treatment and considerations for extensions. Allows courts to require certain probation violators to undergo mental health evaluation treatment as a condition of continued probation. First up on SB 1540 is Brandon Kimura, Deputy Administrative Director of the Courts. They're in support. Next is Behavioral Health Administration for Foreign Health.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Please stand on our question log and write in with your answer to any questions.
In support. Okay, thank you. Albert Cook, Deputy Attorney General for AG's office. Oh, you're here. Good morning.
Morning Chairs Rhodes and Senator Benaventura, members of the committee. My name is Deputy Attorney General Albert Cook and I'm here on behalf of the Department of Attorney General. Thanks for the opportunity to provide comments on this fairly expansive bill. In general, the Department of Attorney General is in support of the overall goals of this bill, you know, to help treat those who have mental illness who are involved in the criminal justice system. Though, we do oppose expanding the Act 26 diversion program. And we also oppose releasing defendants on conditions while awaiting placement. We have concerns about some of the proposed changes to the commitment process. And oppose reducing the prosecutor's role in determining placement of defendants into the diversion program, as well as requiring the defendant's agreement to be placed into the program. Our positions are more filled out in our written testimony and that will be available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Next is William Bento, Office of Public Defender. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Rhodes and Chairs and members of the committee. My name is William Bento. I'm a deputy public defender for the State Office of the Public Defender. We support SB 1540 in part, expanding diversion to include certain misdemeanors and the Class C felony offense. And promoting a dangerous drug in a third degree would be a great help. So we support that. However, we do have concerns with the amendments proposed for 706, 625 dealing with probation. The ability to add to the terms and conditions of probation, the requirement for mental health assessment and treatment, the failure of which by the probationer could result in incarceration, we feel is, as we put it, a regression in the treatment of mental health. It should not be a punishment that if you fail to participate in your mental health treatment or be successful or find that that treatment would not be successful, you face incarceration. As opposed to other means by which you could be encouraged to participate in that.
Thank you very much. Next up is Emmanuel Hernandez, Captain for Holland Police Department. Good morning.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Manuel Hernandez, Captain of the Training Division at HPD. The HPD supports Senate Bill 1540 relating to rehabilitation, which expands diversion programs for nonviolent offenders who are found not fit to stand trial due to issues such as mental health or disease. The HPD recognizes the importance of the proper diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation of those undergoing mental health or disease issues, and the importance of reducing the risk of rates of those individuals on release. The HPD supports when found applicable by the courts, diversion of such individuals to treatment program to include the commitment to the custody of Director of Health for detention, assessment, care, and treatment. For the community, this is a much more positive outcome than a release from custody without treatment, only to possibly reoffend shortly thereafter. Further, we support court mandated conditions for release for individuals subject to treatment programs, furthering the accountability of these individuals in addition to their treatment and rehabilitation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify this morning and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you for being here. Next is Alan Johnson, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. In support. Next is Jeezy Shiong for CARES Community Advocacy Research Education Services. Also, no, with comments. And finally, Ellen Goddard Carson in support. That's all, that's everyone who's signed up for SB 1540. Does anyone else want to testify on SB 1540? Come on up.
Good morning, this is Nakamatsu. Good morning Chairs of all committees, Vice Chairs. We're Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamatsu on behalf of the Honolulu Public Health Community Department. I apologize, we did not submit written testimony on this particular version of the bill. We have been doing our utmost to actually research all of the cases that have gone through Act 26 that we're aware of. We will be submitting testimony consistent with my oral testimony today. We are an opposition to multiple parts of this bill, but we also support those parts that would strengthen the current process. Our primary opposition is to expanding this program to misdemeanors or Class C felonies. Although we firmly wish that this program as it currently exists was providing sufficient effective treatment to these individuals, that is not what we are finding as the program currently stands. Again, we would support trying to add additional mechanisms to see if it works in its current state, at its current level of non, quote unquote, nonviolent petty misdemeanors.
Good. Thank you. That's, that's the end of the one minute. Thank you very much. Anyone else for to testify on SB 1540? Sure, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. Oh, sorry. Mark Patterson, the Chair and Commissioner of the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. We'd like to just say that we're in support of this House bill as our mandate as a commission is to look at ways to control and the population of the correctional systems. Our jails are overcrowded with a lot of these individuals that the bill speaks of. And we think that this would be a good movement toward pretrial reform and alternative methods to incarceration as we deal with our most vulnerable population. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be standing by for questions.
Great, thank you. Next up, I'm sorry, next up. Anyone else who should testify on SB 1540? Okay, seeing none, members' questions? I have lots of questions. For DOH, come on up please. Actually, in judiciary, is judiciary here still?
Yeah, he's still back there.
Can you both come up at the same time? Whoever's... Oh, judiciary wasn't here. Okay, my bad. All right, so the bill excludes from the diversion process any cases under family court jurisdiction unless the presiding judge orders diversion. Why should family court cases not be part of the diversion process?
I would defer to judiciary on that one, I'm sorry. I believe that would be a great question.
You have an opinion on that, Dr. Champion?
I do not. I also would defer to the judiciary for the rationale for that.
Okay. The bill makes a number of appropriations and establishes positions. Do you have estimates of the funding and staff needed to implement the bill?
Yes, right now our estimates are that we would need five additional court-based clinicians. And we can get to the estimates of the funds that would be needed to pay for those positions. But we're looking at additional court-based clinicians in each of the counties as well as one more in Oahu.
And you have a dollar amount too?
We could get that too later today, yeah. The estimates help care costs are changing rapidly. So we want to make sure we get you the correct numbers on those for those court-based clinicians, which are psychologists.
I see, okay. Why the request to delay the implementation?
Because of the hiring that's needed for those court-based clinicians. So in order for this to run, you need those court-based clinicians that are available at the court to be there and to very quickly be able to evaluate that individual, see if they're appropriate. If they appear to be fit, fitness is still an outstanding issue, or they are unfit, so they can determine if they are part of this program or not. And so we need those particularly in the neighbor islands.
Are there parts of the bill that are being implemented this year?
Well, one thing we have done with the previous bill and I think could work is continuing to pilot and work with what we have in resources, but this would greatly, it could greatly increase the number of, or the hours that are needed for that court-based clinician to be available at court. So we can definitely work within what we have. But right now, we have one person who's primarily acting as a court-based clinician in Oahu and spending most of her time doing those nonviolent petty misdemeanors.
Okay, so you think at this point, a pilot program is, pilot project is about as good as you're gonna do, we're gonna do this year?
Without additional folks hired. And so if we got the funding for those, we're looking at probably next January where you would start to be able to recruit for them if the new physicians were.
Okay. The AG's office expressed several concerns about the measure that we'd like your feedback on. First, the term crimes not involving violence or attempted violence is not defined. Does the, do you have a group of people in mind that you think should be covered by this?
We do. There's a public health perspective and then there's probably a legal perspective. We can speak from the health perspective. You definitely want to ensure that they have been determined to be unfit or fitness is an outstanding issue. And then you also want to ensure that those are individuals with doing this where violence has not been impacted. Sometimes the charges that are brought against individuals can differ, so should be examined. One of the examples I will give is there could be someone, for instance, who maybe goes to a location that, over and over again, when they're, when they need this sort of help. And so that may lead to a variety of different charge levels as they're going into this location where they are deemed to not go. So that's a question I would leave up to those individuals on the legal side to examine. But I think that it can, you want to ensure that somebody who is not acting in a way that's harming others, that you're worried about violence, could still be able to be allowed to go through this program. And you also want to make sure that those where you are worried about violence or those acts going on in a community would not be allowed to go through this process.
So the AG is also concerned about whether diverted defendants are actually receiving meaningful mental health treatment? And they included information from the prosecutor's, Honolulu prosecutor's office. And in the two years that Act 26 has been in effect, most defendants' cases were dismissed with prejudice and the defendants were discharged from the state hospital in seven days. And it's unclear if they received any meaningful medical treatment or medical treatment after they were discharged. They also reported that almost all these defendants were rearrested for criminal offenses after they had been through the Act 26 program. Is that, I mean, is seven days in the state hospital enough to do any good? And do you share that concern?
They do each spend seven days for an assessment. There have been 27 individuals that have stayed longer in the Hawaii State Hospital through civil commitments or others. So there's definitely individuals that, and when they remain at the level of being able to be civilly committed, that is occurring and those individuals then stay. For those that do go into the community, all of the individuals are linked to services. They have a place to go.
Do they actually accept the services? I mean, there's link and there's doing something.
Some do and some do not. So having that, what we like to call that motivation and being able to work with individuals, we know that for many of these high-risk individuals, they're gonna take several times and multiple times before they're ready to accept services. That is something that we're aware of.
Sort of the definition of some of these schizophrenias, those that they won't accept services ever?
There could be individuals at different times, although it's considered best practice to have the individual be voluntary and be interested in receiving those services and the outcomes are better. So what you try to do first is work with the individual. That's why we're developing the peer specialist, forensic peer specialist programs. We've trained 47 of them and start to use them. But there are some cases where the individual does not have that in sight and it is harmful to them to not agree with them.
So do you view Act 26 as a success then?
I do, because in the past, these individuals were waiting an average of 55 days. And that's looking at how long it's taken our court evaluators to be able to do the full evaluations that were occurring before. They could sit in jail, you know, in an environment that I would say is not conducive to helping with the mental health issues that they have for 55 days, waiting to even determine if they are eligible, if they are fit or unfit. And then after that, then going to the hospital and again, waiting or sitting there, average of 30 to 60 days where we may be using up a Hawaii State Hospital inpatient psychiatric bed and not need it for that. I think this is a real change where individuals had very small level charges that would have been out in small amounts of time if they weren't waiting to see if they were fit or not fit and not receiving it. This is a big change for them to almost immediately be able to receive services and be linked to care. I consider that a definite improvement to what we had in the system before.
Members, I have a few more questions, but I'll stop if anybody else has anything that they want to...
Yes, I do. Okay, so thank you so much, Dr. Curtis and Dr. Champion for being here. So this bill basically creates behavioral health crisis centers. And as you know, because you folks have been involved in this area for many years. Right now, we have like the emergency rooms are the default assessors. The jails sort of are default assessors because there's no diversion programs. And we also have mobile crisis centers, right? That's going around. Similar to the cahoots in Oregon that Honolulu's implemented. And I know that, I know neighbor Aons have also implemented. And there are also a number of bills going through this session and past sessions, basically requiring the Department of Health to be, I guess, a second assessor other than the boots-on-the-ground people like the ER doctors. If we, as the bills go to conference or about to go to conference, I would like to find out from Department of Health, because on each of these bills, the Department of Health is being named as the stopgap person. Which of these bills and how that should move forward? As either creating another behavioral health crisis center or just basically contracting out the, and expanding the existing mobile centers that's going around? Or basically, that's basically my question. And cost effectiveness of which measure? Is that something that can be done before session? I mean, before session ends?
Yes, yes. What you're bringing up, which I think is really important, is there are a couple of places that we would like to expand our crisis system and make sure that we have all the pieces in place. And we, and some of those are to expand services we already have. And there are a couple of services we would like to create that we think would be important to have in place. One of those, as you mentioned, is sort of an urgent response center that's available 24/7 where you don't have to first have the, be seen medically to ensure that there is not medical needs that you have. So some people refer to those as the Arizona model that you've heard of. For the crisis mobile outreach, we do already have crisis mobile outreach and we've had it for many years, but it could be expanded. And then there are some great teams that are going out at the county level and helping with the crisis mobile outreach teams as well. But we'll be happy to get you that information.
I just want to do one more follow-up. Now I know you have a number of questions, Chair Rhodes. And that is, all of those that I've referred to are non-forensic. I mean, they don't have, they don't get arrested first, whereas this bill refers to an arrest and then diversion. I guess, but as a legislator, I'm thinking I don't want to duplicate costs, especially since the Department of Health has a high vacancy rate. Is there a way, I guess we can, you can collaborate? Because I know we also done last session, granted IHS a million dollars to create this triage, one-stop assessment and stabilization treatment area. But the Department of Health apparently isn't involved in that, or is it?
No, I do not believe so. We are happy to look at any of the services that we can and help with contracting those out so that we're able to create those if they aren't part of what we currently have available. Many of our crisis services are through our contracted care mechanism. We're happy to be part and help with whatever is needed in the community to work together. I think it's gonna take all of us working together and we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Champion from the Adult Mental Health Division, Medical Director. I appreciate the questions because for me, it's an astute look at not wanting to duplicate services, but want to build them out effectively. So how we're going to make traction on this to get people into care appropriately is to build the services throughout the continuum. So the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, CMO, cahoots, is all diversion off-ramping opportunities for people to get linked with treatment before they get involved with the justice system. So Act 26 would be downstream for those folks who are in the criminal justice system. So the goal overall is to off-ramp folks and decrease the need for something like Act 26. So I think in our next stage build-out, we're gonna have to build out the continuum and then assess on an ongoing basis where we need to put more resources as we off-ramp folks. And I also think you're, just in response to your good question about, you know, duplicating who's responsible for what. It's really about who's gonna be accountable for this from a planning purpose. And my observation as well is that you see DOH coming up quite a bit in the different bills. And what I think this is gonna take is a coordinated and collaborative approach between not only a state agency, but also private vendor, private sector vendors to provide services that they could be contracted with.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, please, please don't go away yet. Other questions?
Sorry.
Okay, I still have a couple more for you. So another concern is that the prosecution is removed from the decision to divert a defendant and the diversion requires only the defendant's consent. Why should the prosecution not be involved in determining whether defendant is appropriate for inclusion in a diversion program?
I believe that would also be a question for the judiciary, probably not for health. I can state that for, if we're going toward decriminalizing mental health and looking at how we can appropriately respond to mental health issues, then I think those evaluations by the experts in mental health to determine if they're appropriate for diversion into a mental health-related program can make sense. But further than that, I think you have to ask judiciary.
Okay, so I mean, the question about decriminalizing mental health, I mean, I'm not sure exactly understand what you mean because people with mental illnesses do commit crimes.
Yep.
And that's of course why we have Act 26 to start with, is because it's done something that no one else is allowed to do either, so.
So in our country, we've seen the individuals that were many years ago institutionalized, that we didn't fully fill out the whole continuum of care that we would need in the community. And so what ended up happening was someone who needed mental health services ended up doing something, often very small, low-level charges that we're talking here. Maybe they're at a park after hours when they shouldn't be at the park or other things. And then they get arrested for that reason. And then that ends up being the entry point in for them to receive mental health treatment. So I think right now, the country as a whole is looking at, how do we find a way to get individuals that need this serious mental health treatment? How do we find a way to have them receive that in a way that doesn't take through seeing them needing the care? And then in particular, doing some of these lower level.
But lower level is still illegal?
True, that is true. Yeah.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
So I just want to build on Dr. Curtis's good comments. Early on in this phase of development of trying to engage people who need treatment in treatment and recognizing that there are rising numbers of people with serious mental illness in jails and prisons. That term was used, decriminalizing mental illness to get at the very, you know, communicate the foundation of the concern that a behavior that's due to a mental illness would then be charged as a crime and then people would not get the services they need. I think the field is evolving and looking at a term like that and it's more accurate to describe that the goal is to off-ramp people from the criminal justice system when appropriate.
Okay. I just realized how late the time is, so I'm gonna stop my questioning. If anybody else has any questions on this one, go ahead. We have, we're supposed to stop at 11. So we're four minutes from there and we have two bills to go. So I will turn it over to Chairs and way up in terms of the other two bills.
Okay, thank you very much. So for SB, moving on to SB 95. First up, we have Department of Human Services providing comments. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the Attorney General providing comments. Okay, you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Chair, members of the committee. My name is Brandon Flores. I'm with the Child Support Enforcement Agency. Received our written comments, but I would just like to emphasize that we are in the middle of a two-year modernization process. So implementation of this bill might affect or delay that because we'd have to make some significant changes to our system in order to accommodate a pass-through.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks and support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 95? No one else having registered. Comments, questions, some committee members, including judiciary members, seeing none, we're gonna move on. SB 1492, we have Office of the Governor in support. Hawaii Behavioral Health Administration, Department of Health in support. Thank you very much. Next up, Attorney General providing comments.
My name is Chair, members of the committees. I'm here on behalf of the Department of Attorney General. Providing comments, we're just concerned with the provision of the bill that would allow for the family court to order an assisted community treatment order in proceedings for involuntary hospitalization. Raises due process concern, but we've provided recommended language that addresses that. Basically, instead of ordering an ACT order, directing a referral, directing the petition to refer the matter and coordinate with care with a community ACT treatment provider so long as they agree and then start a petition for ACT specifically. And we also have recommendations regarding the, that would prevent the retroactive application of my department's new mandate to assist in ACT petitions. Thank you. I'm here for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have the judiciary in opposition. Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Hawaii Disability Rights Center providing comments. Jing Shiong Angela of CARES providing comments. And we have four other individuals providing testimony and support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1492? Anybody who is not registered but wishing to testify on SB 1492? Questions, members, seeing none? Short recess for decision-making or can we move on?
Just keep going, I'm concerned.
Okay, so decision-making. First up, judiciary.
First up is SB 1540. This is a classic work in progress. I would like to keep it alive with the members' approval, of course. Recommendation is to clarify the facilities under which the Director of Public Safety and the Chief Justice of the Hawaii Supreme Court are to establish procedures regarding telehealth resources. Also clarify the instances in which the court is to appoint one qualified examiner to examine and report upon the defendant's fitness to proceed. I'd also like to add psychiatric nurse practitioner to the list of those who can act as court-appointed appointee, I mean, examiners. And we'll put in a delayed effective date of March 22, 2075. Does that sound like what we read on?
Yes.
Okay, sounds, any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for Judiciary.
SB 1540, Chair of the Committee of Pass with Amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Alafonte?
Aye.
Senator Sanborn?
Aye.
Senator Alawah?
No.
Measure passes.
Okay, for IHS Committee, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, Senate Bill 1540, recommendations to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Moriwaki?
Aye.
Senator Shingukro?
Aye.
Senator Awat?
No.
Thank you very much. Recommendation is adopted.
So for SB 95, Chair's recommendation is to defer this indefinitely and I ask the advocates to do a resolution to create a working group. Any comments? Well, I'm moving on. So for SB 1492, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're gonna accept the Attorney General's proposed amendments in its written testimony except for Section 3. We're gonna remove Section 3 per judiciary's testimony, replace it with a provision that deems a denial of involuntary commitment as a notification to the Department of Health that the person should be evaluated for ACT. Added effective date, because there's a similar bill as the stated commented earlier that's moving, insert technical nonsubstantive amendments per SMA request. And basically, that's it. Any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Senate Bill 1492, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any no's?
No.
Thank you very much. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, for JDC, same recommendation. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
The members present, AEN, are there any no votes or reservations?
JDC.
Excuse me, JDC?
No votes.
One no vote, measure passes.
Thank you very much. I think that's it.
Yeah, we are retired. Thank you very.